I'd like to call the order, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Boulder Valley School of Education. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt. He's here. I'm here. Niznik, here. Raj Paul, here. Sergeant. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
And Sweeney Moran, Board Member Sweeney Moran, or Vice President Sweeney Moran, could you please state your location?
I am in my dining room.
Thank you.
With a sick kid. Apologies for not being there, but I think we all prefer the germs stay here.
Thank you. Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
So as we have started a tradition of having our student moment, I am really excited to have the Lafayette youth here. I first saw them at the MLK celebration, which they put together all by themselves. It was very student focused and student supported, and it was totally awesome. So it's so wonderful to have you all here. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Anderson to do the rest of the introduction.
Thank you, Board President Gebhardt. And if we can get our Lafayette Youth Advisory Commission to start heading up to the podium. This group was formed in 2006 by the Lafayette City Council. Wonderful youth leadership group in Lafayette. Elena Verveer, an instructor with the CU Boulder School of Education, who's here tonight. Elena, just give everybody a wave so we can see you. Thank you. Was lucky enough to pull this group together, has been working with these outstanding teens ever since. Groups composed of 23 students representing six BVSD middle and high school, as well as one St. Frain Valley District school. The LYAC advises city council on youth-related issues, helps build events like last Monday's MLK March for Peace, which is based out of Angkor Bais Middle School, and they address issues impacting themselves and their peers. Without further ado, Board members, let's welcome the Lafayette Youth Advisory Commission. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. And thank you to President Gebhardt and the BVSD School Board for recognizing ELIAC this evening. My name is Amy Rosenda Salazar, and I'm a senior at Centaurus High School. I'm co-chair of the Lafayette Youth Advisory Commission, and I'm so excited to be back, as last year I was here speaking about decades at Centaurus High School. Also speaking tonight are fellow ELIAC co-chairs, Josie Briggs, who's a sophomore at Nywha High School, and a proud pioneer and Manhattan graduate, Santali Donahue, who is a senior at Peak to Peak. And we're also joined by fellow ELIAC members, Eliza Siblet, an eighth grader at Louisville Middle, Emily, oh, I'm sorry, Emiliano de la Torre Monge from, or sixth grader at Peak to Peak, Ellen Liu, a junior at Peak to Peak, and Gael Teck Veredet, a junior at Arapaho Ridge, and our mentor and advisor, Elena Verveer. As Superintendent Anderson shared, the Lafayette Youth Advisory Commission, or ELIAC, was initially founded in 2006 in response to findings from the Lafayette Youth Project, which was a two-year process that empowered community members, young people included, to jointly identify opportunities and strategies to better support local youth. After holding more than 50 community cafes or conversations and several hundred one-to-one meetings, Lafayette Youth Project organizers compiled a list of recommendations for the community's consideration. While they ranged from providing community-emerging recommendations, also included the need for additional youth leadership and civic engagement opportunities. It was that this recommendation motivated Elena Verveer, who led the Lafayette Youth Project and continued to serve as her advisor, and the Lafayette City Council to establish ELIAC.
In addition to advising the Lafayette City Council on important community issues, we are responsible for directly addressing and raising awareness about issues that particularly affect local youth. We select these issues annually. We are also responsible for hosting Lafayette's annual Martin Luther King Jr., the annual 18th event was held last Monday, and a spring event to honor de la suerte and other members of the BIPOC community who have made substantial contributions to this country. Perhaps our most important role is that we are charged with elevating youth voice in the greater community. As you all know, young people have a skill set that adults often lack. We are determined, tenacious, creative, and energetic. It's true. Tapping these skills, ELIAC has sought to generate attention about several social issues affecting youth. Shortly after it was founded, for example, members developed a large-scale traveling mural and corresponding brochure to raise awareness about the prevalence of teen depression. Other projects include the establishment of the Lafayette Skate Park in 2008, holding special events to celebrate the culture and traditions of local Latino youth, distributing mini-grants to advance youth-led community engagement, hosting bilingual workshops for parents to provide them with the tools and encouragement needed to establish and sustain conversations with their own children on complex topics like substance abuse and mental health, and collaborating with community partners, including the Boulder County Health Youth Alliance, Boulder County Public Health, KGNU, NCAR, and Lafayette-based schools, nonprofits, and governmental agencies to raise awareness about a host of issues and related resources. And every two years, we host city council candidates forums to introduce candidates and their platforms to community members, as well as have historically joined the League of Women Voters to host other forums.
So moving on from advocacy to policy, ELIAC has successfully advocated for changes to the city's youth curfew policy in 2007. After months of research, dozens of discussions with key stakeholders, and encouragement from our peers, ELIAC worked alongside the Lafayette Police Department and city council to amend the policy. While not all of ELIAC's suggestions were adopted, the policy was formally changed, allowing young people to stay out an hour later on weekdays, and to ensure that provisions to ensure young people attending school or work events and/or who are responsible for caring for family members would not be penalized. And now, more than a decade later, we intend to lobby council to eliminate the youth curfew entirely, as our research indicates, that not only is the curfew antiquated, but also discriminatory. Other examples of our policy work include introducing Lafayette Ordinance 40 to prevent Lafayette restaurants from advertising sherry beverages as part of the package to children's meals. We have also advocated for amendments to smoking age and other smoke-free provisions, and made recommendations concerning marijuana policies. While ELIAC makes focused efforts to give back to make our community better and more inclusive, we also have cultivated a community for ourselves. ELIAC not only provides us with a vehicle to advance common causes and fulfill our founding mission, but also a sense of community and a sense of belonging. We are family. Additionally, we are immensely grateful to Elena Verveer for her tireless efforts to empower Lafayette's youth. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve and represent the Lafayette community, and look forward to finding ways to work more closely with Lafayette Schools and the BVSD Board of Education. We're happy to take any questions, if we have time, of course.
We'd be happy to. So Beth, do you have some questions?
I mean, similarly, I just want to congratulate you all on an incredible presentation and all the work you're doing. Thank you so much for sharing. And that leads to my question. What can we do to partner with you better as a school board?
Do you guys want to help me answer? Well, so currently, we are working with some funding from the city to bring a CU program that will create some opportunities for youth in the community to get some preparedness for adulthood. So that includes like learning how to write our taxes, and all the way to learning how to apply for college if we're like a first-generation college student. So we're going to be doing a lot of that in the Lafayette community, so I'm sure that we'll get some of that integration into our Centaurus High School, for sure. I think more than anything, it's just important for us to know that the BVSD Board of Education is supportive of our hard work and our dedication that we have. You know, we meet for several hours every month, and we have the same goal that BVSD has of creating this community that's inclusive, and more than anything supportive, especially for our minority groups, and especially those that need more resources than others. So, yeah.
Richard?
Muchisimas gracias. Me da mucho orgullo de saber que están haciendo algo para trabajar con los padres de familia acerca de algunos asuntos de drogas y otros temas. I just want to congratulate you, and thank you very much for also working with families around some of the topics that you mentioned. We just heard a presentation on strategic partnerships, and I'm hoping that you're part of that group of folks that are going to be working with the district on certain topics, and family engagement is one of them. So I'm hoping that they have contacted you, or you have contacted them, so that we can include you as a strategic partner, especially young people. That's something that we do lack, is young people, leadership and all of that. So thank you very much. Muchisimas gracias por su trabajo.
I think that's it for questions from the board. It was a true honor to get to see you again tonight. Keep up the good work, and we look forward to a continued partnership. And don't be shy about asking where we can be good partners with you, because it's kind of what we're here for, is to try and help groups like yours grow and flourish and be part of our community. So thanks very much. Rob, do you have anything?
I would just say, this is just such an impressive leadership group within our community. We haven't hung out in a while. I know that you all had me a few years back. I don't know if any of you remember that, but to invite me, I'd love to be back, and maybe even some of our board members, if we could sit in on your meeting and you could ask us questions. It was a really great opportunity. They meet in Lafayette, they still all meet at the community center? No? At the library?
And it would be our great pleasure to have you guys sit in on our meetings, because we know how important it is to especially collaborate with Boulder Valley School District.
Yeah.
So thank you so much for having us.
So great to see you all. Thanks for all the great work, and Board members, thank you for letting ELIAC come and show off for us this evening a little bit. So congratulations.
So we'll start the meeting as we have started in the past with our landing acknowledgement. And tonight, Richard, you want to read it, or I can read it? I have it right here.
Thank you very much, Kathy. This is the landing acknowledgement that Boulder Valley School District adopted. Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Pueblo, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land, who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policy of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students, so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people, and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together. And I want to especially thank the committee that wrote this particular land acknowledgement. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard, and join you in your appreciation for the hard work that went into writing it. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities, so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. Sorry, the camera's coming down. So Lisa, we get to see you in like 3D, two on the side and one in the front here. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this motion, at this time, I would take a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Moved by Beth, seconded by Nicole. Laura, can you call the roll on the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes, me too.
Motion passes.
So we'll begin, as we always do, with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Board President Gebhardt, members of the board. It's great to be here this evening. What a great way to start our meeting with the student moment. That's typically part of my report, but because we had so many families and students here, we decided to allow them to go first this evening. So Board members, I have a few things to cover in my comments tonight. I'm going to look to Randy to pull up our deck, so I can kind of move forward. As this is coming up, I'll go ahead and get started. The first thing I want to talk about to the board and our public this evening is our graduation and dropout rates. Board members, Colorado Department of Education recently released this information for not only the state, but for districts across the state, including BVSD. So as we think about several years of trends, BVSD had been incrementally gaining over several years. This year, our graduation rate went down 0.3%, still very high, amongst the highest in the Denver metro at 91.6%, but down slightly from 91.9% from over the last year. In comparison, our state's graduation rate is 82.3%, and so as you could see, we're still significantly above the state average. We saw some increases and decreases within our subgroups. Those are highlighted here. Increases, I would say the most notable would be for economically disadvantaged students. We had a 2.3% increase in graduation rate, but we also saw some decreases, only one over 3%, and that was for our Black African-American students, which is down to 81%. We also looked, in addition to graduation rates, the state released dropout rates, which I believe is on the next slide. And before I speak to dropout rates, just to kind of give the public and the board some context, there are, when a student leaves our school district, from the time they're in seventh grade to they're in 12th grade, if they leave, and we haven't followed up with the family, know and understand where they go, and enter the appropriate withdrawal code, those students are considered dropouts. So if you were to think of your traditional, you know, if you were to ask the person on the street, "What is a high school dropout?", it's somebody who's at high school and quits high school and stops going. Sometimes that's the case. Other times, it's students move, and for a variety of reasons, we aren't able to track where they've been, and then the state considers that a dropout. And that's guided by federal guidelines, federal four-year graduation rate. So if you click through where we saw our dropout rate decrease and increase, again, there's, we saw the dropout rate decrease for homeless students, for students who consider Title I, but then we saw some increases across the board, more increases than decreases. Since this data has come out, I've asked our team to pull together to really understand the processes that we're using to know and understand and track students better, to have a better sense of why we're losing track of students, and why our dropout codes increased this year over the past year. And so we have good work, I think, going on there. But that is to say that our dropout rate grew 0.3% from 0.05 to point, well, it looks like 0.04% from 0.5 to 0.9%. And we don't take that situation lightly. And so we'll be continuing to work with our schools, continuing to work with district staff. I believe there was a meeting today where we were talking about this. We need to make sure that we're taking the initiative to improve our quality control over this information, making sure that we're using the right codes, and then also making sure that students, that we're grabbing each and every student, making sure that they complete not only their high school diploma, but also hopefully some of the Grad+ requirements that we're encouraging all of our students to strive for. So I'm happy to pause there and answer any questions around this data. I know the board has some questions in regards to this, and then I can move on with the other aspects of the superintendent's comments.
Richard?
Just a quick question. Rob, how do you square that decrease in Title I, which is mostly for economically disadvantaged students, and then the economically disadvantaged students, which is an increase in dropout? And there's a decrease in dropouts in Title I? I'm trying to...
It doesn't make sense. I'm unsure what the Title I code is. I'll have to get some more information. To your point, I think the more accurate data is the increase in dropout rates of our economically disadvantaged students. I don't know what that Title I number includes, but we'll make sure that we can research that and get that information to you all.
And just a last question here. How soon do you think we'll have information regarding the work that you're going to be doing around trying to figure out where these kids are at, or fixing that part of the system?
I would say that we've already made some significant improvements to some of the data quality control. We can certainly provide the board some information in an update. I can send that to you all in kind of a comprehensive look of the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
Is that all, Richard, for now?
For now.
Okay. Nicole?
I was just wondering if you have a sense of where in our district these students are coming from? I'm wondering if these are lingering effects from displacement from the Marshall Fires, or other things that may have contributed, once we stopped providing some of those transportation for those McKinney-Vento students?
Great question. I did take a look at this from a school viewpoint in regards to the graduation rates, and I would say that, you know, most of our big comprehensive high schools are well above 90%. And I think where we saw lower graduation rates with some of our programs, where we know it's going to take kids five years to graduate. And remember, this is a four-year graduation rate that's published. Some kids graduate in five years. There's also a five-year graduation rate. And so our graduation rate percentages are lower at those schools, as you would assume, whether it's Arapaho Ridge, Justice, Boulder Prep. But I didn't see any anomalies in data amongst our comprehensive high schools, up or down a point or two was the trend. But I can give you all that school-specific information, if you'd like.
Beth? Lisa?
Thank you. Gosh, I think everybody in this room knows that I dropped out of Boulder High in 1996, my junior year, and that was a really difficult path to walk. So this is certainly something that I take seriously, and I think one thing in the last three years that I've been really excited about in BVSD is the number of different programs we have around retention and around finding ways to really drop this number and to try and keep our kids close. My question is, one of the programs I've been most excited about that we have is ALPS, right? I think I have that name right, Elton's Program. And I wonder if you could tell me a little bit about whether some of the expansion of those services that was discussed is happening, and how that fits into all this?
Yes. So for the board and for the public, ALPS is a program that we've started as an alternative, a credit-bearing program for students to participate in, another option. And we started it small. I would say that, you know, we have a handful, maybe a dozen, a dozen or so students that are involved in that program. We did do a visit of the program, I believe it was last year. Really, really exciting, you know, just the idea that, you know, we're continuing to strive and develop programs that meet the individual needs of kids. So I think that the expansion of the ALPS program will be something under consideration during this budget cycle, to the extent that there's an increased need. That's something that we would look at. But, you know, all reports are sharing that the ALPS program, and I'm going to look at our staff here, they may or may not be able to answer this. When we think about graduation rate, dropout rates, the students that are in ALPS, are they like an annex of our Boulder Universal program, or they're not their own individual school code, I know, right? So it's a program. And so we don't have the data, Lisa, specifically, on the four-year graduation rates from ALPS, because they wouldn't be considered a school. But we can get that information to you anecdotally, and we were there. Lots of really great work happening there that's focused on credit recovery and social, emotional support, in just an environment where kids feel more comfortable than in a lot of their other settings.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I mean, it seems like there's obviously a lot to drill down here on different causes and things that might be going on, but I just feel so strongly about the incredible work being done in that program, and the way it obviously connects with some of the issues we're seeing here. So I'll look forward to hearing more about that, and to seeing it hopefully come up in our next budget cycle.
Is that, any other questions, Lisa? Okay. Beth?
I guess for me, I remember the data that we saw last time, and today's data, too. What stands out is that our students with limited English proficiency, and just the dropout rates we're seeing there. Do we have plans to add an additional layer of analysis, or what are we doing there particularly?
You know, I look forward to updating the board after we've really kind of dove into the work that's been happening over the past couple of weeks around the data quality control. I think that's an aspect of it. But then also, I think that when you look at this in a school-by-school view, we might also see something as well. You know, still feeling some of the effects of the pandemic, fires, you know, again, a dropout is somebody who's left our district, and we don't know where they are. They left school. And so to the extent that, the best way to get data on that is when students stop showing up, you track them down, you find out what's going. If they still live in our community, you encourage them to come into one of either our regular schools, or to some of the alternative programs. We have an incredibly impressive number of options for students who want something different in their high school experience, that we can connect them to. But we'll look forward to sharing the data that we do have with the board, and then if there's any, as I look through that, if there's anything that I notice, or trends, issues that we need to fix, I'll bring not only those issues, but our plan to solve those as well.
So my questions are around the special education graduation rate that went down. Special education students can have until they're 21 to graduate, but are they counted in the four-year, and then repenalized if they take till 21? How...
We'll get you the specific federal guidelines on that. I do believe that there are included. I don't believe that the state takes them out of the calculation. I believe they are included in the four-year graduation rate. But there's also a five-year graduation rate, so let us get you some more clarity on that, because to your point, we do provide services beyond 18. And again, even in some of our alternative programs, they're designed to hang on to kids until they finish, not if you don't finish in four years, we're kicking you out. Right? So we just need to understand that that's better, in my opinion, than saying, "After four years, forget it." We know that kids need more time, especially during these times and the aftermath of the pandemic, so, but we can get you more information on the federal guidelines.
And when you talk about the alternative programs, are you including Justice and Boulder Prep in those, or are you talking just like a New Vista and...
Absolutely. Boulder Prep, Justice, they offer very different options for kids, very different settings. Oftentimes, as kids are working through their high school years, if they feel like a large traditional school is too big, that they get behind in credits and need acceleration opportunities, they need just different alternative environments, whether it's Boulder Prep, whether it's Justice, whether it's ALPS, whether it's New Vista, whether it's Arapaho Ridge, whether it's Boulder Universal, we have almost as many options as we have traditional high schools.
And I know we have coming up sometime in the next couple of months, an analysis of kind of just the graduation itself, like how many kids are doing capstone, how are we looking with our new graduation requirements? So it kind of will blend in nicely with this report. And I'll look forward to just getting the kind of school-by-school analysis that you said you're going to do on the, these issues that you just were showing us a side about on our graduation and dropout rates. Richard?
Yeah, that was the question I was going to ask, Rob, in terms of the in-depth analysis. I would, you know, because, for example, when you look at percentages, it doesn't really tell me a whole lot. I'd like to know...
The number.
The number, you know, how many, actually from each high school, if we can get that number, and all of that.
Absolutely.
Plus, I'd like to see the dropout rates of the alternative high schools, too.
Oh, yeah.
For sure. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I just wasn't sure, Rob, since their charters, if we include them or if we can get the same data, but I guess we'll get an answer to that.
Yeah, we've got everything.
Okay. Any other questions on this part? So this is just phase one of your superintendent's report. We'll turn you on to the next-
A multi-phased report today. We had the pre-phase, then phase one. Excited to, and Randy, if you can bring kind of our deck back up. So last Tuesday, board members and community members, the state began accepting applications for universal preschool. We're very excited for this process and to continue to engage in being leaders here in Boulder County, in Broomfield County, in our area in regards to preschool. As you all, board members, will know, and the public, I believe, knows, this new launch of universal preschool means that all Coloradans will now get free preschool, and we want to make sure that we're encouraging our families to choose a BVSD preschool. We are known throughout the state for outstanding early childhood education, built wraparound childcare that meet the needs of our working families. If you're a working family, you can get four full days of care if you opt into our childcare, our early learning care, in addition to our preschool. This past week, our team has been supporting families as they negotiate the state's new Bridge Care Portal. And board members, so if individuals in our community or other communities want to come to a BVSD preschool, they have to go through the state's system portal, and then they're connected to us. So the good news is that there's still plenty of time to sign up. So if anybody's watching and you've got a little one that'll be four years old by October 1st, ask that you go to our website, www.bvsd.org/universal- preschool. Start the process and get more information. They'll also mention that there are some three-year-olds that are also eligible if they meet the state's requirements. And encourage families who are interested to check out the website I just mentioned for more details. So board members, for our next item, I want to thank all of our parents and board members who came out for last week's BVSD Connects event at Monarch High School. As a reminder to the community and the board, I've committed to going out into our community at least a few times every semester, share an update on what's happening, connect with our community, our parents, our kids, anybody who wants to show, answer questions. Every one of our BVSD Connects is different, depending upon what folks' interests are, and we customize. So it's not a canned presentation where we just talk a lot about the district. I'll do a little bit of that, but certainly want to engage folks where they are and want to hear them. So again, thanks to Kathy, Board President Kathy Gettard, and our Board President Nicole Rajpaul for joining me last week. We got some good feedback on a variety of issues. We talked about safety and security, screen time in schools, digital safety, talented, gifted programs, talked about our programs to support dyslexic students, and really appreciated the engagement of our community. We have two more events coming up. On Thursday, from 6:30 to 8:00 at Centennial Middle School, and then on Tuesday, this session will be in Spanish from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. next Tuesday at Pioneer. And so I'd encourage our community to come out. Also, on the same evening, board members, I want to mention that our event, that our BVSD Connects, was followed at Monarch by One, organized by the Parent Engagement Network PEN, and it was to engage our community about the dangers of fentanyl. I want to thank PEN for putting this together and for Colorado Attorney General Phil Weiser and 20th Judicial District Assistant Attorney Ken Cuffner for speaking to our attendees. I was able to pop in. I think we had about 50 to 75 parents. Awareness around fentanyl and the dangers of fentanyl is, I think, very important. So I want to thank everybody who came out for that. And then want to end with some congratulations. So board members, you know this, but the public should know this as well, that Stacy Ziss, one of our board members, was recently named as Casby's representative to the CHASA Board and also to the Executive Board of Casby. So congratulations, Stacy. That's right. And Kathy, were you named to the Finance Committee? Had you been serving on the committee or were you just recently named to that?
I've been on it for a really long time, but I was renamed, so yes.
Renamed. I knew that. I knew that. So congratulations to Kathy. Congratulations to everyone. It's really important, board members, and it just makes us all so proud as you lead across our state. So thank you for your service, not just our community but the state of Colorado. And that's all I have for Phase Three of the Superintendent Comments.
Board members, questions? Lisa, I can't see you, so do you have any questions?
I hear your questions.
No questions? Is that what she said?
Yeah.
Okay. Richard? No? Stacy? So, Rob, I have a couple of questions. On the universal preschool, it wasn't like Ticketmaster where you had to get in first to assure your spot, but you have to pick, tell me if I have this right, you choose a couple of spots and then you're matched, so you may not even get the school that you want. And the match doesn't come out for a while. Can you just explain a little of that? Because it's pretty confusing.
I believe I can, if it hasn't changed in the past 24 hours. And so the way the system works is you enter Bridge Care, and anybody interested in a universal preschool opportunity selects numerous providers. And the way that the state is allocating seats is through a wave system. And so they will release, so we have told the state we have 1,300 seats for folks in our community who want to participate in preschool, but the state only releases a certain amount at any one time. So they may say, okay, BVSD, you get 300 seats. So if you apply and BVSD is number one, and if our 300-seat initial wave is up, what they would say to parents is you need to wait until the next wave opens. So, yep, that's how it is designed today. We've had, board members, I haven't been shy about this, we've had a lot of concerns around not only the governance structure, the leadership, the pace that this has been rolling out. We're very excited for universal preschool. We're still working out and ironing out the kinks as we continue to implement or evolve. I would just encourage any community members, if you're trying to get into our preschool program, you get waitlisted or something happens, just connect with our office. Contact, you go to our website, connect with somebody. We can kind of share, walk you through the process and let you know where you are, how many seats we have, whether the, when the state is anticipating releasing more seats. And so we'll be there for our community and committed to working through to make sure that this process works for all of us.
Go ahead, Richard.
So if I'm a parent and the 300 seats that were available are already taken, so how long do I have to wait for this next wave?
That is a great question, Richard. Probably too long, if it's a minute.
For a parent that has a four-year-old, it is too long, a minute.
I understand. Again, I mean, I think the state has its reasons for rolling universal preschool out in the ways that it has. Again, I would just say, community members, if you want to go to a BVSD preschool, we have 1,300 seats. We have plenty of seats, and so if for whatever reason you are waitlisted or you're encouraged to go somewhere else, feel free to give us a call. We can kind of let you know where you are and try to guide you through what you would need to do to be able to get into a BVSD preschool.
Well, I am going to sign up to attend the ECCBC Council meeting, which is coming up, I believe, tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, just to hear what the heck they're up to, because they're the ones that control all this stuff here, and they should know, so.
So the waves is controlled by the state. ECCBC is our LCO, Local Coordinating Organization. And so they are the ones that have been tapped by the state to organize this situation locally. But those are public meetings, you know, encourage you to go and let me know what you find out, and I'd be interested to hear.
And then to make it even more complicated, if you happen to be the parent of a special needs child and you apply to a private school, they can deny you and say, we can't serve you. Correct? That's my understanding.
Unfortunately, yes.
So there's lots of, so for anyone who's listening and feeling confused, take Rob up on his offer.
Please, call us. We'll take care of you. We're here to take care of our community.
There will be lots of twists and turns, and we can anticipate all of them as we try to ask questions at the board table. So thank you, Rob, for stepping into the breach here because I think it's really important, but it's also really confusing, and we don't want to lose families just because of administrative or technical issues that might come along.
Our team is standing by, ready to assist. And again, you know, this is a really big initiative that went incredibly fast. And so I think over time, things will get better and improve. Right now, the road's a little bit bumpy, but we'll answer the phones, we'll answer your emails. We want to help serve our community. And again, you know, just BVSD, our preschool program and BVSD is just well-respected throughout the state of Colorado. No better way to make sure your kid's prepared for kindergarten and BVSD than to go to preschool and BVSD.
And this question came up last night when I was talking with the legal women voters. We have space in all our schools, thanks to the last bond for preschool.
That's correct.
So we're ready, equipped, and ready to rock and roll when we get those students coming.
Now, to be clear, we're not going to have preschool in every building.
Correct. Those schools that-
But we do have space. We have lots of space, thanks to the bond.
All right. Thank you. I think that's all the questions I have, based on your report. Thank you. Anybody else have questions as a result of our conversation? Lisa? No? Okay. We'll now proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is the District Accountability Committee Report. Laura has public comment after this, so I'm confused. Laura?
Hi, yes. Superintendent's report, public hearing, or DAC report, and then public hearing, is the order. Public comment comes after the DAC report.
Why? I'm just curious, why? Never like that.
We usually do public comment before we do presentations, so.
I'm just curious. I don't care at all.
The people waiting here, I know we don't have like an overwhelming amount of public comment, are you willing to-
I know Ross is waiting.
Yeah, we have someone.
We have Ross Winters online.
Do I have a motion to move the agenda around?
Yeah.
Moved by Beth, seconded by Nicole. Jorge, is it all right if we, we only have two people for public comment, they've been waiting a long time? So we'll do that, and then we'll hear your report, if that's all right?
Thank you.
Okay. So I get to read the public comment. Thank you for your patience. Did we need to call the vote on the moving the agenda around? Probably.
Just do it.
Just, Laura?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gettard?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Rajpaul?
That's fine.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we'll now begin the public participation section of the board's meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting the request to speak during public participation forum that can be found on the BVSD website or by contacting the board secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. The board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they are responsible for their own speech. Please note that this is a listening opportunity for the board, and the board does not engage in a dialogue or answer questions as part of public participation. The board needs time to consider the comments made and may include items on future board meeting agendas to address issues raised by our public and community. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district; two, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of two minutes, a timer will sound and the microphone will be muted. We only have two speakers this evening addressing non-agenda items. One, well, right, one speaker was given four minutes, two minutes by William Quinby, so our speaker is Russ Venner Weiner. I'm going to really botch the last name. Are you on?
Yes, I am here. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Anderson and the board. My name is Ross Weiner. I'm a teacher, education leader, and BVSD parent, who has spoken before. I'm here tonight to say I have launched a parent petition to ask BVSD to begin a district-wide advisory program for its middle and high schools, which I'll read in a minute. I want to first clarify why I'm doing this. You know, it's not to criticize BVSD, or certainly not to say that TCU is not doing enough. I know that everyone has the best intentions and is working at 150%. But, you know, one real problem I'm running into with this program is that parents do not understand what advisory is and what it could do for our schools, and I'm trying to change that. I was also, to be honest, unsure whether I was the right person to do this petition as I'm not really a petition person, and my kids are leaving high school soon. But I went to a meeting last week at Boulder High School, which was called by Principal Alana Morales because of the suicides that have happened at Boulder High School this year. The meeting was heart-wrenching. At the meeting, one mother said she lost her child to suicide two years ago. Another parent described asking her son, who was a freshman, to describe his high school experience. He said, Mom, it feels chaotic. I wander around the halls and I see that everyone has friends. And then she said, and her voice broke as she started crying, how can I make friends? Every parent in the room shed a tear. The words that came up over and over again in the meeting were belonging and also trusted adult relationships. A national expert on suicide prevention at that meeting said that a trusted adult relationship is the single most important thing a school can do to prevent future suicides. I will read the petition, which I'm also emailing to the board this evening. This is what the petition says. And we only have 120 signatures, so we actually have a long way to go. This petition asks Boulder Valley School to fund an advisory program, a form of social and emotional learning in its middle and high schools. Hundreds of districts use advisory programs as a key tool to improve learning, help children thrive, and reduce school violence, bullying, and suicides. And this petition has a whole series of footnotes citing the evidence. Advisory is a regular time during the school week when students meet in a small group with a trusted advisor to connect with peers, build community, receive academic coaching, and focus on SEL. Numerous studies have proven that students learn better, feel better, and are safer when they have at least one trusted adult relationship at school. Denver Public Schools followed a national trend by establishing a 20-minute advisory period every day in all of its schools in 2021. It's time for BVSD to do the same. Most BVSD high schools currently have so-called advisory periods, which are in fact optional office hours that few students use. This is a lost opportunity. Let's use part of this time in the schedule for an advisory program. This petition asks BVSD to fund an advisory pilot in its middle and high schools during the 23-24 school year. This pilot would provide training and stipends for teachers who volunteer and students who opt in. I see I'm running out of time, so I will share the rest of the petition with you, but that's the gist of it. I very much appreciate you hearing my comments.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public participation. Is that correct, Laura?
That's correct.
I've been asked if we could take a short comfort break right now before we move into our DAC presentation. Sorry. We'll be quick. Call the meeting back to order. Dr. Anderson, can you introduce at long last our DAC speakers? And thank you for your cooperation and your patience. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, board members. It's my pleasure to introduce our DAC leadership to give us information tonight in regards to budget survey results and recommendations. With that, I will turn it over to DAC President Jorge Chavez.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Anderson. Thank you for having us. My name is Jorge Chavez. I'm the president of the District Accountability Committee, and I'm joined this evening by Melissa Halavich, who's chairing our budget subcommittee. Melissa Halavich, who's chairing our budget subcommittee. Um, this evening, we're going to review some data that we collected from the School Accountability Committee survey that we held, that we hold every year, and review our budget priorities recommendations. And I'll turn it over to Melissa Halavich, who's going to lead that discussion. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us. So the DAC considered a variety of data to guide its spending and recommendations. The sources included enrollment and academic data, the BVSD strategic plan, review of prior year's recommendations, consultation with the SAC committees, and via the budget survey. As you can see, about 77% did complete it via consensus rather than alone. In theme one, ensuring all instruction is challenging, engaging, relevant, and meeting the needs of all students. Objective one is increasing alignment to a guaranteed and viable instructional model, creating a standards-based scope and sequence for pre-K through 12, defining and implementing common and aligned instructional model and practices, designing support systems to maximize school-based administrators' instructional leadership capacity. This was moderately, um, important, if you will. Objective two within theme one is increasing fidelity to a tiered system of supports, expanding and increasing district-wide implementation of culturally responsive tiered system of supports, redefining and completing development of an adaptive assessment framework that informs instruction and aligning with a tiered system of supports across all content areas. This was highly critical. Key words for this is decreasing the gap while increasing support. Theme two is ensuring, providing schools and educators with responsive and customized supports with responsive, I'm sorry, to best serve students. Objective three is ensuring allocation of resources that are responsive, accountable, and focused on growth by creating a tiered system of school requirements supporting an accountability metrics, which drive the allocation of resources, implementing a needs-based allocation system, creating a system to monitor and assess academic return on investments for current and future programs. This was highly critical as well. Key words here are differentiated funds for school needs, or for the needs of the schools individually, really. Objective four within theme three is increasing and improving school-family connections to develop a more supportive and collaborative environment that promotes equitable outcomes and removing barriers, strengthening school-family connections through implementation of consistent district-wide strategies that improve communication, collaboration, and belonging. This is more moderate, kind of split between moderate and highly. It looks like it's 40% across the board, if you will. Um, I think you guys do a great job of that, to be honest. I do. Objective five within theme three, optimizing community partnerships to systematically align with BVSD's priorities, establishing a system for strategically managing existing partnerships and building new partnerships, embracing community assets to ensure meaningful career discovery and postgraduate preparation across all school levels for every student. This is, this is not as important, more moderate, because again, you're doing a pretty good job of that. Theme four, cultivating a positive and inclusive culture, which is really, I think, BVSD's heart throughout BVSD, that promotes the well-being of students, families, employees. Objective six is aligning to a common research-based framework that ensures all students and adults feel supported, respected, and safe by defining and putting into practice culturally responsive principles and best practices that challenge inequity and bias, developing and implementing an employee support system to increase their overall wellness and efficacy in serving students. This is highly critical and right in line with your goals. Key words for this would be increasing staff-school support for more responsiveness, more responsiveness and better training, or more training, because you do do a lot of training. The recommendations, DAC commends the district for steps taken to address strategic long-term planning in response to DAC recommendations from 2022, in particular, the formation of a long-term planning committee, expanding efforts to increase data transparency and accessibility, the continued focus on prioritizing equitable outcomes for our students. Current recommendations for this year would be reinforcing the long-term recommendations, but returning to a focus on current priorities identified by schools via annual SAC budget surveys, alignment with the strategic plan, and current enrollment and academic data patterns. The DAC therefore recommends that BVSD continue investing in long-term planning, continue to align its budget with the broad goals and strategies identified in the strategic plan on a yearly basis to address any short-term and immediate needs, reexamining whether the strategic plan in its current iteration will continue to address the needs of BVSD and post-pandemic educational and social contexts. For the upcoming year of 2023 and '24, schools have overwhelmingly identified three areas that we would need to prioritize for spending. As a result, particular attention should be paid to investing and supporting equity and social-emotional well-being for students and staff, which seems to be a key part discussed even here tonight, continued district-wide implementation and expansion of culturally responsive tiered system of supports and of need-based differentiated supports, implementing accountability metrics to assess return on your investments. Gaps in achievement and growth for special population of students, like special education, second, free reduced lunch, have seen little progress over time and are likely to have been exasperated as a result of school disruption and the pandemic. DAC continues to recommend, recommend more dedication to these issues. This is definitely where my heart is, because he knows this. I have four kiddos and one has special needs. Highly skilled teachers and academic support staff, expanded access to gifted and talented programming for all students, in particular, DLL, FRL, and special education kiddos, expanding training and supports for working with those special education students, increasing investment, I would say this is super key, in classroom paraprofessionals who have considerable student contact hours, so that when you do what you do to get those awesome teachers, we don't lose them, even though they're here because of their heart and because of the culture of Boulder Valley, because they're inundated and they can't get it done, and they're so tired. And, uh, I, I think that's key. Differentiated interventions and supports across school based on need to address longstanding gaps and disparities, high-level evidence-based culturally competent curricula. Recommendations for social-emotional learning and supports, returning to the classroom has been challenging for all the students, and as academic success is predicated on social-emotional well-being, particular attention should be paid to social-emotional learning and supports. The DAC commends the district for expansion of access to mental health resources and implementation of multi-tiered systems of supports across schools in the district, encouraging the district to continue to focus on expanding the existing support infrastructure and developing an inclusive learning environment by prioritizing a few things, continued investment in culturally competent school mental health professionals and wraparound services, a concerted focus on developing family supports, like the community liaisons, and expansion of evidence-based SEL programming into the academic curricula. Our recommendations for improving data reporting and accountability is we can, we recommend the considerable investment in progress by the district in making strategic plans, metric data publicly available, the rollout of public-facing data dashboards is a critical first step, and I think many are super excited about it, making performance data available, particularly for special populations, increasing trust and allows the public to evaluate district progress, further developing and publicizing reliable measure of student performance and program evaluation, continuing investment in data-driven instruction and training, collaboration with stakeholders to make available data accessible and translatable to increase and proving utility, more frequent progress reporting to increase accountability and facilitate family engagement. This would be another key thing for kiddos with special needs, so that if we received more updates, then it'd be easier to implement what the school's already trying to do and be a partner with them. So it, it helps us do, help support the kiddos at home as well. Uh, expanding access and utility of data dashboards, expanding efforts to inform families about state assessments such as CMASS or SATs, and strategic plan metrics and their purposes. See, I am succinct. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration. We really appreciate all that you do. You are an amazing district, and we know how hard you work, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. And I would like just to add a couple of points. The DAC, the SAC budget survey was designed to kind of copy the strategic plan, so we'd kind of be aligned in the same direction, and so it asked specifically about, about those objectives. And they were asked to identify kind of high, uh, critical priorities for this immediate year, moderate priorities and low priorities, not because they're not important, but in terms of what the immediate need was, so kind of take it in that context. And so we identified the three areas that were most important with immediate need, and that's what is centered in the recommendations. The word maps that are up there, um, we give the respondents an opportunity to kind of identi, to put in comments about what they prioritize. And so those words represent the words of the respondents, right, from each of the school accountability committees and the principals, saying that, you know, we value equity, we need to address the gaps, we need supports. Uh, I want to point out here that social-emotional learning and development is important, not just for the students, but for our staff and our teachers, right? And, and I think that really came out in the, in the surveys this year. Um, and the continued progress on data and accountability is, is important as well. Um, we, I think the district's made tremendous strides in the few years that I've been involved with the district, um, and there's a lot of work to be done, and our budget recommendations prioritize that. Um, but we thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
Thanks. That was really comprehensive and really helpful. Thank you. Um, board members, questions? Richard?
I just want to thank Jorge and DAC for all the hard work they're doing around this, and, uh, uh, we just had our prioritizing sessions, and I'm just trying to see how, what we did and how it fits with your recommendations.
Nicole?
I just want to say thank you. I know how much time goes into preparing these budget recommendations. It is a big lift, uh, and I want you and the public to know how much we, as a board, value the work that the DAC does, and the fact that you represent all of the schools in our district and carry that voice forward. So that really is, um, important to us. So people that want to get involved in the community, your school accountability committees and your district accountability committees are really great places to start. And I just, I love that you are reinforcing that we need to spend money in a way that supports our strategic plan, and, um, I think some of the things that came out as highly critical in your slide deck and in your recommendations are things we talk about as a board a lot as well, so differentiated funding, AROI, so lots of alignment in between all of these stakeholder groups, which is great.
Beth? Lisa?
No, thank you, but thank you so much, Jorge, and, um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first name of the other presenter, but I really appreciate everything you both shared tonight.
It's Melissa. Uh, thank you, board. We appreciate the feedback and always working with you, and, um, we appreciate the collaborative nature of the district administration as well, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, board members, we'll move on to board communication. Who wants to go first? Lisa, can we go first with you?
I don't think I have anything. Thank you.
All right. Stacy?
Yeah. First, I want to apologize for my part in messing up the agenda. It just seemed really strange to me. Secondly, um, as part of my being on the board of CHASA, I was able to attend the Hall of Fame dinner and event last night, and it was amazing. There are some really inspirational coaches and advisors we have in our state, and we're really lucky. I had, I was blown away by the presentation itself and then the caliber of honorees was, Dr. Hill was there also. He can attest. It was amazing. That's it.
Richard, do you have anything?
No, I'm just, uh, processing all this through my head right now in terms of, uh, the, the presentation we heard earlier with the strategic plan and, uh, partnerships, uh, and some of the comments we heard from public participation and the DAC report, and, uh, my head's kind of spinning a little bit right now, you know, but I think that we, like Nicole said, we are, we seem to be aligned very well in terms of what we would, we've been talking about and what the DAC recommended today, tonight. Uh, but, uh, yeah.
It's been a information-heavy board meeting, which is great, but there's a lot to process. Nicole?
I just want to say Kathy and I had the pleasure of attending the BVSD Connects last week, and it is great to hear from our community and get out and engage with our community. And I, I think the folks that showed up, that show up at these events, they, they do get, as to Rob said, to talk about things that really are relevant to them personally, both as a group, and then afterwards, people are hanging around. And I encourage folks, um, it's not a canned presentation. We really do care about what's, what your perception is of, of the work we're doing in this district. So show up at, at these events, and I look forward to seeing anybody on Thursday, because I'll be at that one for sure.
Beth? Um, I'll just share, um, thanks, Rob, and thanks, Randy. What the, if you haven't been to a BVSD Connects, it says Rob puts it at Choose Your Own Adventure or at Jeopardy Squares, and there's lots of topics, or you can go off and, and as we saw, there were some legitimate concerns, and Rob always takes the time to sit down and talk with the community, so I'm always impressed with how you handle the, the Connects, because you never know what's going to be the hot issue of the night. So, um, they're, they're great events, and I really appreciate you starting those. As you, as I said earlier, I was able to attend the Martin Luther King Celebration at Angivine, and the students, as you guys saw tonight, were just amazing. Um, you walk into Angivine, and it was so clear that this was student-driven, student-planned, student-led. Um, there were families doing pictures. We had a great dance-a-thon. We had Hazel Miller singing. Then we had a march. It was just, it was just really heartwarming to see how well these students had stepped in to the, um, management and organization of this event. And then we had Congressman Joe Nagus at the end, who said it was his most favorite event of MLK because of the student, um, impact and the way the students bring it all together. So that was really, um, impressive, and I look forward to many more years of being able to go and participate in that. I want to remind our public that since we won't have a board meeting before the next event, on February 9th and February 11th, we have three candidate forums for people who are interested in running for school board, because it will be here before you know it. So the ones on the 9th, I think we're posting them all over the place. I can't tell you all the specific places, but Laura's been very engaged in this, as has Randy. We'll be here. We have one, um, midday, one in the evening, and then the one on Saturday we scheduled in the morning so that people could get on with their day if they wanted to come. We will have information from CASB. Board members will be there to answer questions. And so I encourage anyone who's even, like, had a passing thought about joining the school board, um, to come and learn a little bit more about it, talk with us, find out what's involved. Um, I have to say, it's one of the most rewarding experiences I've had in my life, and, um, I'm really looking forward to, hoping that great candidates show up and so that we can have, continue the really great work of BVSD. So those two meetings are coming up, and then we'll have another one in March, um, so that we can, if people miss this one, they can actually, um, pick up again in March. And I, I assume I'm speaking for the whole board, that if you don't want to make it to the forum, but you have questions, um, I personally would be happy to go to coffee or answer questions or respond to emails if anybody has questions about what it's like to be on a board, and I see my board members all nodding their heads, too. So, um, reach out. It's, um, it's not paid, but it's, um, it's really rewarding work, and you get to work with this amazing staff and parents. And then I just want to, a couple more, a couple more quick things. As you heard, Stacy was, um, elected to the executive committee of the CASB Board of Directors. We have a new incoming president who comes from the Littleton School Board. Her name's Lindley McCrery. So we are going to be in very good hands with CASB going forward. Um, and then tomorrow, I head off to the NSBA conference, um, in DC, which I'm super excited about, and for the first time, we will be having rural presentations, and our very own Michelle Murphy, who runs the Rural Alliance, is one of the keynote presenters, and I'll be moderating the panel with her. So, um, we will have rural representation from across the country on a first-time-ever panel, hoping that we will lead then to, um, for those of you who know what CUBE is, it's the Council of Urban Educators. We're hoping to have, I'm not going to call it RUBE for obvious reasons, but something similar, um, for rural educators sponsored by NSBA. So that's really exciting. So I think that's all I have for, um, board communication. I think we'll move on to the legislative updates. Is that right, Rob? Do you have anything, Rob, for the legislative update?
No, the, just, we're, we're paying very close attention, um, I think to, you know, session has started. I think bills are starting... has started, I think bills are starting to drop. You know, we, we have our, our eyes on a few things that are happening, potentially areas that are within our legislative priorities are the, are the things that really guide myself and staff as we engage on these opportunities. You know, paying attention to, to finance and accountability. I think those are two hot topics this session that will involve education, and so we will continue to engage. I've been out, I've been down to the Capitol a few times, meeting with, with legislators to kind of share our position and hope to help shape new bills that will, that will benefit not only Colorado, but the students here in BVSD.
Questions, anyone? As, as you said, Rob, we're waiting for a couple of bills to actually drop, one on accountability, and I really am deeply appreciative of your hard work on that to make sure that some positive work comes out and that we don't have to wait two more years for another task force to kind of look at data that we already know needs to be improved, and that we, there's lots of good research out there on accountability. So it's not like we need to wait for some new something to come along and help us figure out what to do. And, and today, a bill dropped, I think it dropped today, that would set up a task force of some sort to make recommendations. It was called the School District Allocation Committee. Do I have that right, Bill? Something like that. It's quite bizarre, especially since the Constitution requires that it's the General Assembly that sets the allocations, and so we'll be looking at that as, as we kind of see that work its way and see if it actually gets any legs. So buckle your seatbelts, Inc., it's going to be a wild ride, for sure. So are we, are we okay to keep going, board? Okay. So we'll move on to the action items consent grouping. 8.1 Personnel Items, 8.2 Approval of Minutes, January 10, 2023, 8.3 Approval of Minutes, January 17, 2023, Special Meeting, 8.4 Acceptance of Donation Bear Creek Elementary, 8.5 Acceptance of Donation Lewisville Elementary, 8.6 Acceptance of Donation University Hill Elementary, 8.7 Approval of Contract with Fry and Associates for Construction of a Playground at Early Connections Infant and Toddler Center, and 8.8 Purchase of Two Modular Classrooms for the Meadowlark School. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Lisa? Okay. Any board members? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So second?
Moved by Stacy, seconded by Richard. Any discussions on this? Stacy?
Just a comment. Thankfully, the bond passed because we have on the consent agenda to buy modulars for Meadowlark, and that's exactly what we were trying to avoid. So thankfully, the bond passed, and we will be able to build a new school so that those modulars won't be there forever. Just wanted to mention that.
I noticed that as well. We, I assume the modulars are going to have to be there for a couple of years, because what's the end date for Parkdale being built? Not till 2026, 2025?
Yep, I, I think that that's something that, that, that we're monitoring in regards to, and I believe that the data point was just the permits they, that they pull and the homes they complete, to know and understand. But, board members, you'll remember that you approved these modulars in our, in last year's budget. We knew that this was going to happen. By buying them now, we'll be able to place them over the summer and be ready for next year.
Any other comments? All right, Laura, could you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is our approval of the 2022-23 Revised Budget. Do we have a motion? Moved by Stacy, seconded by Beth. Is there any discussion on this? I think this is the same budget that was presented at our last board meeting by our CFO. No changes. He's saying, yes, it's the same. Lisa, any questions or comments?
No.
Board members, any concerns, questions? All right, is there a, we have a motion? Can you call the roll, please, Laura?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our final action item is Resolution 23-02 in Support of Bond Spending. Do we have a motion? Moved by Stacy, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion on this? All right. Lisa, I assume you'll wave at me if you want to, if you have anything you want to say on these. I'll look up, but any discussion on?
Sounds good.
Okay. So Laura, could you call the roll on Resolution 23-02, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we have two policy study items up tonight. Review and Study of Revised Policy BDFE, Community Bond Oversight Committee. I'll turn it over to Kathleen.
Yes, good evening, board members. You may remember this policy. We actually looked at it in 2019, and then had a little thing called a pandemic and didn't get back to it. But now with the successful passing of the bond issue, it is a good time to make sure that this policy is aligned with the board's policies on advisory committees. So the red lines that you'll see are just some cleanup, remembering this was previously called the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. We've changed that language throughout board policy at the direction of the board through resolution. So this will put us on solid footing to get the CBAC group back to work, and doing so consistent with a, a very comprehensive board policy.
Discussion, board members? What's the timing of this, Kathleen? This is up for study, so can you just walk us through the timing to where we'll get applications, and then we will get, I assume we'll approve the members, or do we not need to approve the members? What's the? I see Rob Price coming.
Yes, I'll ask Rob Price. The policy timeline, we would propose that the board adopt this at the board's next regular meeting, which will be February 14th.
And we, to expand on that, we will do a call for applications the end of February. Assuming that we have that done, we'll bring it at the first meeting in March, assuming the second meeting is canceled. If not, we'll bring it the first meeting in April. Kathleen, can you remind me, is the language, once we have the applications, does it come back to the board, or does it just go to the president and the vice president?
The slate will be approved by the board, once it's recommended by the superintendent staff.
So we will bring the applications back to the board for approval, with the idea that we have our first meeting in May.
That's what my next question was, is when's the first meeting?
Yep.
And how often do they meet?
Quarterly, if not, more than that.
As needed?
Yep, yep. I think in the beginning, we'll probably meet quarterly towards the, we get towards the tail end of it, middle of it, we'll meet on the, every other month.
I am, to the members of the public who are listening, CBAC is a great committee. It's really integral to our being able to successfully implement the bond. I can tell you that the members, I, I was the board liaison to CBAC before, and I can tell you, it was impressive. They, they showed up super prepared. They would say to our, our accounting people, you said this was going to be 55 cents, and now it's 60. Can you tell me why? And I'm not kidding, it was that level of detail. You're laughing, but I'm right, aren't I, Rob? And here's what you told us at the last meeting, and now you're changing, so what's going on? And it was through that oversight and the good leadership of you that we were able to successfully complete our last bond and come in 1% under budget of a $650 million bond. So there's like high stakes here, Rob, for our next implementation, but I think we're up to the task. Stacy?
So your comment made me think, that means that there'll be a board liaison to this CBAC? Is that in policy? I don't remember necessarily seeing it, but it seems like it would be a wise idea and probably really helpful.
And these meetings are open to the public, so that was kind of how I would attend as well.
I guess the question?
Sorry?
The question I'd have is, is that something that you are recommending that we add into policy, or?
They're open to the public, so.
Yeah, but she mentioned.
I shouldn't have used the word.
Sorry, Kathy said that she was the board liaison, so I was wondering, is that a thing?
I was the one who attended, I think, anybody could have attended, and then I would report back from attending, so I apologize for saying board liaison.
It seems like formally or informally, it would be a good idea.
And Rob would report back from CBAC meetings, so even if there weren't board members there, we would get a report back from Rob. And the process would be that issues would come to CBAC, they would vote on a recommendation, and then you would bring that recommendation to the board for approval. That's the process.
Yeah, CBAC, they make a recommendation, the board takes action.
And then we can refer questions to CBAC, and then they can debate it, like when we were trying to figure out air conditioning. So CBAC, we would say, what does CBAC think? They would make a recommendation, send it back to us, and then we would make the final recommendation.
That is correct, yep.
Is that a good description of the process?
Yep.
All right, so we don't need to take a vote on this? Are there any questions or comments or changes that anyone wants to make to this before we bring it back for final action? Nicole?
I was just, your last comment about the board being able to present questions to the CBAC members, I don't, I don't recall, and I'm trying to quickly look, seeing that written in policy, and is that something that we want added, or is it just an informal agreement about how sort of that two-way communication works between CBAC and the board?
I think it was more informal.
It was more informal. A lot of times, the board would, would ask if CBAC has weighed in, and then if they hadn't, we would take it back to CBAC to weigh in, make a recommendation, then bring it back to the board.
And the reason that it came up around air conditioning is that was such a big investment and involved a lot of time and energy and commitment, and so that's why I think it went that way, because of, it was, it wasn't like just, are we going to add a heating unit to this school? It was like, are we going to add air conditioning to all the schools, which was a board priority, but then getting CBAC's commitment to that was really important. So I think on big issues like that, informally, we can just, if anything like that comes up, this is a much smaller.
Because that wasn't in the original bond.
Correct.
I mean, that's why, yeah.
So any other questions, changes to this? All right, then Kathleen, I think we'll bring it back for final. Thank you, Rob, for steering us through this. The second policy for study is Review and Study of Revised Policy DJDJE. Kathleen?
This is also one that we've had the red lines underway for some time. Paul Scolacci, our Director of Supply Chain Management, is here tonight to help us with this policy recommendation. The primary purpose here is to get us aligned with the federal purchasing and grant guidelines and requirements. This policy has not been updated in too long, there have been some significant changes. This will, if you'll look on page two, when we look at those federal definitions of micro purchases, small purchases, and then larger purchases, this significantly streamlines and aligns the way our purchasing and contracting needs to work. So it will enable us to be more efficient as an organization while also still making sure that the board has close oversight. So I can't really emphasize enough how much our financial services team and our purchasing team would like to see this new policy adopted, and soon. So that would be my summary. I'm happy to take any questions.
Richard, you look like you have a question.
I, a comment and maybe a question will come along with that. I recall, I think on my first year on the board, not my second year on the board, one of the things that I was looking at, and I think Rob was also involved in this process in terms of minority and business-owned contracting stipulations. And I believe we, we did go visit the Denver Public School System, and I'm not sure what happened after that, but I know that things kind of stopped or was not feasible at that time, and I'm wondering if, if somehow we could entertain at least some discussion around including, I don't know if it's a preference or what, I'm just thinking out loud here, minority and women-owned businesses as contractors of some sort.
So I remember we had an RFI on that, and we had legal advice that we were not needing to do that, and it would have been more complicated to do. If you wanted to send an RFI, Richard, we could certainly find out if anything's changed and if there's anything we need to do to address that. Does that work?
I guess it could work. I'm just asking a question. I guess I can ask the question in the RFI, but it seems like, in terms of federal rules and stuff like that, I'm wondering if there's anything in federal rules that, that signify or at least talks a little bit about minority and business, or women biz, women-owned businesses around contracting, if it's part of the federal guidelines or not.
There is some language in the federal guidelines around that, and certainly this policy complies with all of the federal guidelines. But that RFI, I know, was done before my time by my predecessor, but it's certainly something that we could revisit and I could update.
Thank you. I'll just have to find the RFI.
Board member Garcia, I have enough information to find that RFI. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, Richard? Nicole?
Thanks. Thanks for all the work on this policy. I have two questions. One, I noticed it said prefer employees to use their P-cards. That's not a requirement, and I was curious, what situations might an employee use a personal credit card or a debit card rather than a P-card? And just some clarification on why that language is used, that's question one. And then my second question is, I was taken aback by the low thresholds for President of the Board approval and board approval on spending, and I took some time looking at our comparative school districts. $50,000 is a very small chunk of change, and given the cost of goods and inflation for, for that threshold, and most of our neighboring school districts use a threshold at first board interaction of 25,000, or 250,000 to 500,000 for going to a board approval. And I was wondering why we, as a district, have such a low threshold? And then how many instances go to the board president between that 50 and that lower threshold? And so what, some, what's some of the rationales around how we came up with our price, our limits there?
My understanding is this is related to bond purchases. Mostly, we've had that discussion, Nicole, about whether we want to raise the other limits for board approval and superintendent approval. Lisa, that's how it was explained to me. Is that accurate, Kathleen? And we can revisit that conversation if we need to, but this was more limited to trying to get in place this policy so as the bond spending is coming up.
Yeah, we addressed, actually, we, we talked about taking the bond resolution that the board just adopted and embedding it in policy, but the recommendation of staff was to proceed with those two separate pieces, so we pulled them apart. So those higher thresholds will apply to the bond program contracts. This policy is just our basic, our generally applicable purchasing and contracting policy. At one point, the board had entertained some discussion around higher thresholds. There wasn't clear consensus. So in the absence of a clear board consensus, we didn't propose specific red lines. I can tell you, I believe your observation is correct, board member Raj Paul. When you look at similarly sized districts, many of them do have higher thresholds of authority, and we can get you the numbers, I would say, on contracts. In my experience here, we don't have a massive volume that are signed by the board president or even the superintendent at this point, which is why the staff really didn't come up with a, a recommendation to push those.
Thanks for that. Maybe something to add to future agenda planning and discussion at another time? Go ahead, and then I have one more question.
To the extent that if, if these thresholds, thresholds are raised, right, if that's a discussion we'd want to have, that, then that would be less work on staff, right? And then the, the offset is then, is then direct oversight through voting for the board. And, you know, the, I've, I've been, and I've worked in multiple districts, and I think that we've had this conversation internally, we've had, we've had this conversation, you know, is this, you know, you know, do we push for higher thresholds? know, do we push for higher thresholds, knowing that it would take less staff time? I think it's the comfort level of the board and the oversight level that the board is comfortable with, and then the oversight that then the community then also has an opportunity to have as they get to review the public documents, you know, to the extent that that happens or not. You know, in my experience, in districts, and I can't speak to the history of this policy, when trust between staff, superintendent, board is high, thresholds will go up, something happens, they scrape them back. So to the extent that the board would want to discuss this, you know, we'd be happy to do that. I think that our finance team would be thrilled to do that, but it is at the will of the board. I want to honor and respect the role, your role, as, I mean, fiscal oversight and the community's role in having eyes on, you know, what can be significantly, can be significant purchases. You know, we run a tight ship in finance, and I think that you all know that and understand that. But those are the offsets, and I would say that that's what I've seen in the past, and I can't speak to why the thresholds are where they are today, but we are happy to live within whatever the board's comfortable with.
Thank you for that, and I would welcome board member feedback. Personally, I have high confidence in our team, and I want to be mindful of everybody's workloads, and $50,000, we're not buying much with that. So I'd be open to having that conversation. And my last question is, there's a reg for this policy that uses different, the old levels of spending for micro and et cetera. Do we need to just change those dollar amounts to align with the policy itself?
At the time that the board is ready to take action on this policy, we will retire the regulation.
Even better, thank you.
And Nicole, I was one of the people who was opposed to raising the limits, because I like the accountability, and when I talked with Kathleen about it, and that there isn't a significant amount of work that would be saved by raising them, I continue to believe that where we are right now, I think that Dr. Anderson's comfortable with it, and the accountability that it provides to our community, even if there aren't that many people who are going and reading the contracts and whatnot, I just, that's where I fall on the side of the equation. But certainly, if you want to bring it up when we talk about agenda setting, we can have the conversation again. But, so are we okay with this as it is, or do we want amendments to this? Or should we have, Kathleen? I know they're anxious to get this passed.
We need to pass this, then, to the extent that if there's, unless there's something that's significant, I wouldn't want to delay this at all.
And we could always bring it back to change the limits.
Yeah.
So knowing that, Lisa, are you okay with this, being brought back for final? Okay. Everybody all right with bringing this back for final?
Yep, at our next meeting.
At our next meeting?
Mm-hmm. In February.
I think that's February 14th?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, Lisa, that's.
Yep, yep.
All right. We are now at future agenda requests. Lisa, do you have any?
I do not, thank you.
Richard? Other board members?
I have.
Beth?
I think we've talked a little bit about this, but I am interested in getting an update with our accelerated math pathways. I know that we're working on that, but I think that's coming in the next little bit of time.
Dr. Anderson?
You'll be getting an update on that later on in the semester as part of our strategic plan update around instruction. Be speaking to our cabinet tomorrow about our prioritization meeting, and so you can expect that to happen, but please, please capture that, Laura, on the document, and so then that we'll, we can cross-reference that once we've presented.
Nicole, anything?
I will just put that, so Laura helps me to remember that maybe next fall, we think, and maybe with the new board, discuss those thresholds, and if they continue to be appropriate or not for the policy DJ.
Then I think we are adjourned. Laura, do I need, I hardly ever have a motion with roll call for adjourning. Can we just adjourn, or do, because you have it in my script that I need to take a roll call. You usually do a motion and then a second. So?
I move that we adjourn. Seconded.
Okay, I guess I do need roll call. Legal counsel's advising me. Who was the second? Okay. Thank you. Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes, we're adjourned.